Good evening and welcome. We are here at the Nashua High School, Nashua North, Nashua High School North Boardroom. It is about 6:02 PM, Monday, February 12th. I now call this meeting of the Curriculum Committee to order. And for the role, Ms. Gilio?
Here.
Ms. Prin, Mrs. Prin?
Here.
In attendance, we also have Dr. Sarfey, who will put on a couple of presentations, give us an update, I believe, and she has two guests, and I'll turn it over to you.
Great, thank you so much. So I am here tonight with Monica Tino, who is one of our K-8 science coaches, and also Patty Davidson, who is our newest K-8 science coaches, and they are going to provide a science update from August until February. Let's take it away, ladies.
Hello. There we go. Hello. We have, we've brought a couple of teachers and students to you tonight to give you a little bit of the science update, and just because it's tough for them to get out here at this hour, we have a little bit of information and a few videos for you from them in the classroom, which we thought would be kind of fun as part of our update. So from Pennechuck Middle School, we have some sixth grade scientists. Their teacher is Jennifer Axanborn in the sixth grade. They're studying, they were studying a heating system. They had this problem that they had to solve. They had to figure out which heating system would be the best for a school called Riverdale School, and you can see there, there's a little bit of differences there between them. And as part of their studies, they were using models to try to figure out which heating system would be best for their school. And so, one of the models, you can see the girls there have the water bottle, they're looking at how the heating systems, the water and the pipes actually heats the air. And so they're going to take you through this and tell you a little bit about what they learned.
We were working on figuring out which was, which heating system was the best for...
One heating system used a big reservoir of groundwater, the other used a tank.
We use models to learn in science.
Let's show you a model.
So we have an empty water bottle, and we flip it and get, put it on the soap, top of the water bottle on the soap, and if we put it on the hot water, the bubble gets filled with hot wa, air, and if you put it on the cold water, the bubble disappears and it goes inside the, the water bottle, which means that cold water is sinking in all the hot air that was in the bubble. You learn that hot water can warm the air.
Okay, so we also have another sixth grader who's going to tell us a little bit about a model that he used in science class. They were studying at the beginning of this year, a unit where they were looking at the human body system. That's a picture right there of the simulation that's part of the program where they simulate, well, if you give them this much food, starches and proteins, or you take proteins out of the diet, like, what's going to happen to all the body systems? And so, they are introduced to this fictional character named Elisa, and she's a patient who all of a sudden starts feeling really tired, and they're trying to figure out what's wrong with her. So they spend the unit trying to figure out what's wrong with Elisa. And this was one of the things that they were doing with the respiratory system. And so we'll click to the next one, and we'll see Troy.
Hello, I'm Troy Schneider. I'm in sixth grade. I go to Pennechuck Middle School. My teacher is Mrs. Samborn. The unit we learned was about a girl named Alicia, whose respiratory system wasn't working. And eventually, we found out that it was caused by diabetes. And we found that out by making a model about a lung. This red balloon represents a diaphragm, and this blue balloon represents the lung.
So that was the sixth...
Hello, I'm Troy.
So that was the sixth grade at Pennechuck Middle School. And what we were really highlighting there was our use of modeling in science. This starts in grades kindergarten and goes all the way up till eighth grade. And it's one of the science and engineering practices in which a representation of a phenomenon is used to explain how and why something in the world works the way that it does. One of the things that is great about it is that it helps students in their sense-making, kind of figure out what's going on, because they start to explain, and then they go, oh, wait a minute, I don't get that. It supports students working with others, because they work with others as they model and ask questions. And it also, for us, the educators, it helps us to track progress in student learning over time when they're explaining their models. And the pictures you see up there were for, one of their units, they drew out models. So the models can be, you know, like, 3D, like you saw there, but they can also be on paper. They're just modeling, trying to figure out, well, what's happening here, what's going on here.
Hi, I'm Patty Davidson. I'm also a K-8 science coach, and I want to take you to Led Street Elementary School, where the fifth graders were doing a unit about modeling matter. So one of the things in the Amplify units is that the students always have a role as a scientist, which helps them think like scientists, go through the process, it's engaging and relevant. And so, in this unit, in properties of, sorry, modeling matter, fifth grade, click please, they're trying to figure out what, they're trying to figure out about salad dressing. So the unit is about matter and how the little tiny particles have the same properties as the substances that they make up. So they sort of have two challenges, is they're trying to separate a mixture, and then they're trying to combine two different substances that don't mix. And salad dressing is a great example of this. And so, one of the things that we were able to do was to connect them with a food scientist from Ken's Steakhouse. So Paula Feldmar, the, one of the senior food scientists, did a live talk, on Zoom, a virtual talk, with the fifth graders at Led Street Elementary School, and just explained to them the R&amp;D process, and, you know, showed them a little experiment with oil and water and emulsifiers, that's that thing that allows them to, you know, mix over time. The students were able to ask questions, and of course, they wanted to know all kinds of crazy stuff about hot sauces and failures, and, but that was a really great experience that the students were able to kind of connect what they were doing in the classroom with maybe a potential career. And so on this next slide, they, the students will explain to you what they did.
In science class, we learned about molecules and their properties by helping out fictional companies called good food productions. They admit customer complaints about their salad dressing. This gave us a chance to put on our food science tests. The three major complaints they had from their customers were, was their harmful dye in their salad dressing, five were just only sediment, and last, why did it separate after it was repeatedly mixed?
Together, over several weeks, we made, we wrote, we read books, made models, and used similar simulations and experiments to build our knowledge of molecules. Some of the things we learned are, all molecules of one substance are exactly the same, and they are different from molecules of any other substance.
When the molecules of a solid are attracted to the molecules of a liquid, they spread apart and mix together evenly. When the molecules of a solid aren't attracted to molecules of a liquid, they stay clustered together as a solid. And molecules of an emulsifier attract the molecule of two liquids that do not typically mix, allowing the molecules of the emulsifier and of the liquids to mix. As a class, we were able to solve the problems for good food productions, one molecule at a time.
Davidson and Ms. Tino helped to enhance our understanding by working in our classroom and allowing us to meet with the food scientists via Zoom. Paula Feldmar from Ken's Steakhouse zoomed in with the fifth grader at Led Street School to show us how salad dressing is created. She explained and showed us that they have some of the same problems we have solved for, for good food production. Sometimes in the lab, salad dressing and sauces do not mix right and are clumpy. She also said, after they taste them, they might need to add more flavoring or change the mixture due to texture. She gave us examples of specific dressings, like ones with oil and vinegar that needed emulsifiers like lecithin to keep them mixed. Lastly, she also gave us a sneak peek into the lab to share upcoming sauces and flavorings. If you know any business that need, that have a problem to solve, let our teacher know, and we'll get right to it.
So they were engaged in working as food scientists, and then they were able to speak to a real food scientist. And actually, Paula did a Zoom today with the fifth graders at Mount Pleasant, and then we also have two more scheduled in March with Charlotte Ave and Birch Hill. So we really appreciate Paula and Ken's, you know, supporting education like that. So that's another important thing, like modeling, also thinking of themselves as scientists. So now we're going to take you over to Broad Street Elementary School with the second graders, and they were working as glue scientists. So their charge was to try and figure out to make a stickier glue. And so, Mr. Forrest at Broad Street was nice enough to tailor the letter and kind of challenge the students and check in on them. And so they're going through the process of making predictions of what kinds of dry mixtures, wet mixtures, they're experimenting in the whole design process, which is kind of like what was going on with the food scientists too, which really lends itself to the hands-on, but instead of just doing kind of random different experiments, they're working on solving a problem. So they did some reading, they read about jelly bean engineers that, you know, engage in that design process, and Jess made hair gel too. And then they came, you know, did observations of dry ingredients and wet ingredients, they predicted what ingredients would work together best, and then they set up these tests where they tried out their glues, and they are working on smelling like scientists. They were so cute, because they were like this. Okay. Because safety is paramount, smell like a scientist, that's okay, keep going. Yeah, we're good. But they did these tests, and so they're still in the process right now of figuring out, you know, which ingredients would make the best glue, and then they'll have their answer to present back. So this is, you know, this whole idea of the design cycle that really puts those different pieces of science together.
All right, and still at Broad Street Elementary School, in the kindergarten, they were pinball engineers, and they made their own pinball machines. Did you skip right over that? Oh, I just wanted to show you, thank you, I just wanted to show you this one real quick. So all of the units from K all the way to eight are kind of developed this way. They start off with a phenomenon, in this case ours is, how can we create a pinball machine that lets us control the way a pinball moves? You know, the one with the, the lung, that one was, is, why is Elisa sick? So that all the units have that, and they all have guiding questions that are student developed. Then they have a set of activities, you can say under what we did there, a set of activities that all help to bring the kids to a basic understanding, which is what they figure out. Those activities that they do are varied, so they're aimed at getting at all kinds, all different students. So when they figure something out here, the kindergartners figured out how to get the ball to move, and you need to exert a force to do that. So we'll go on to the next slide, and we have a video of a couple of kids talking to us and telling us a little bit about what they know about their pinball machines. So pay close attention to their vocabulary usage that they have, it's amazing. And what did you do to get the ball to start to move? And what did the launcher do to the ball to get it to start to move? Great job. What kind of force was that?
A strong.
A strong force, great job. Ready? Go ahead.
This is a strong force.
Strong force, okay, good. What else, gentle force? All right. A strong force and a gentle force?
I'll show you the strong force.
Okay. Woo, that was which one, strong or gentle?
A strong.
Okay, and can you make...
I'll show you the gentle one.
Nice, okay. Nice. We also have a presentation for you that just kind of sums up their unit. So that was great fun, our, oh, no, we're not done, sorry.
I'm sorry, did I miss you?
Have a couple more slides left, it's okay. So throughout this unit with the, with the kindergartners, you can see all of the things that they were doing in there. These are also part of all the units, K to eight, in Amplify Science. But one of the things that we really focus on with the next-gen science standards and with the support of Amplify Science is productive talk. This is when students are intellectually engaged in discussion. This is something that goes across other subject areas as well, we have the math talk in math and in ELA as well. It, oh, sorry. It provides a window into students' thinking. Talk is something that's so important for all of our students, whether they're practicing English or they're practicing, it's that rehearsal for being able to write. It gives them confidence to take risks, so it's a really important part of our program and what we do. The next thing is, in that unit with the pinball machines, the kids used language frames just like this, and they're in all the K to one units. So they take the little cards from the bottom, and they insert them there as a group, and we say, okay, it moved to the right because the force was to the right. And we'd already practiced doing something, maybe with tennis balls on the floor or something, then we learned how to talk about it, and then we go back, and they talk about it with their friends. Okay, I moved it to the right because it went to the right, so they're practicing that language. These scaffolds go from kindergarten all the way to eighth grade, of course, they look different at the older grades, but they really start strong here for the kindergartners and first graders.
Patty Davidson, sorry. Usually at the end of the unit, especially these ones where they're designing something like salad dressing or a pinball machine, there is a great opportunity for the students to showcase their work. So the kindergartners at Broad Street invited the third graders to come down, and the third graders also do a unit on force. And so it was pretty cool that the third graders had the design goal checklist and were reading it to the kindergartners, and they were checking off. And you can see on the next slide that they were excited to have a chance to be older students with younger students and check out their work, and also a chance to let them try out their pinball machine, their new friend could try it out too, and give them some suggestions and talk about force. And, you know, we heard a lot of the students saying, you know, I wish we did this in kindergarten, so that was pretty exciting too. So it was a great opportunity for them to do some more productive science talk and to show off all their hard work.
So as we were talking about before, the anchoring phenomenon is that big question that we ask at the beginning of each unit. Like I said, all the units K to eight have those, and the kids, this grounds their student, their learning in a common experience. So there's an even playing field for everyone in the class, no matter where they came from. It drives learning throughout the unit, they're always trying to figure out, why is Elisa sick, or how do we make that pinball machine? It captures their initial ideas as a pre-assessment opportunity, and then invites students to connect to their own experiences that they've had in the past, so that they can then use that learning in the future as well. We also wanted to tell you about an opportunity we have at the eighth grade this year. We won the lottery at Amplify, and we were able to participate in the field trial. They're actually redoing their units a little bit, and they're, so the Lawrence Hall of Fa, the Horns, the Lawrence Hall of Science is at Berkeley University in California, and they're actually the writers of the Amplify, Amplify Science just publishes it. So they're researching and redoing the units right now. They have new phenomenon, the lesson delivery is a little bit different, instructional formats are a little bit different, they have additional materials for the students to use, more kind of hands-on opportunities, and they're looking for teacher and student feedback. And so we were fortunate enough to get into the field trial. Catherine Burke and Jack Williams are both the eighth grade science teachers at Pennechuck Middle School, and they are right now teaching this unit, that they got all of the supplies and everything, and every day they do a quick little survey about how the lesson went, and the kid, you know, what the kids say to them, it all goes, so it's all goes towards kind of revamping and making the units even better than they already are. So it was a great opportunity that we had in our district as well.
And then just Patty Davidson, one last thing that they, we wanted to let you know about that's happening in NSD 42. We mentioned a lot with the scientists doing things in the Zoom virtually, but there's a lot of great, you know, in-person opportunities and field trips. The Led Street students participating, the fifth graders and the scientists in residence program in River Classroom, that's part of the Nashua River Watershed Association, where they were focusing on animal adaptations and actually went out canoeing on our Nashua River, which is pretty awesome. The seventh graders at Holm Street and also at Fairgrounds Middle School went to check out the wastewater treatment plant as part of the unit on what's wrong with Westfield's water, chemical reactions. They also had a guest speaker come in from the DPW. Amy Gill is one of their science, senior engineers, and she came to talk to them about the watershed and how what we do to the land is what we do to the water, and that was a great connection with that unit. And then the seventh graders at Pennechuck Middle School had presenters from the SCE Science Center in Manchester come and do programs on the ghostly heart and some of the really cool stuff they're doing about biofabrication right there in the Manchester Milliard. So there's a lot of teachers working really hard at getting, you know, students excited about science and showing them how this is relevant and important to what we're doing and making awesome connections with our community, so yay for them.
Thank you, guys, so I don't want you to leave. So what I was actually looking for was, I wanted to just share one of my newsletters from a couple of weeks ago. So I had the opportunity to go and observe both Monica and Patty teach a K science lesson. So I just want to, just kind of want to point out a couple of things that these guys do. So not only do they help to coach teachers, but they actually teach the lessons so that they continue to refine their own practice and become even more effective with what they're doing every day, and in terms of their feedback to teachers when they're giving them, you know, some feedback about what they're observing. But additionally, not only did they, not only do they teach the lessons, but they allow groups of teachers to go and observe their instruction. And then what we did after we observed their instruction, along with, because we were at Broad Street, along with Mr. Forrest and some of the other coaches, we sat down and we debriefed both lessons. We talked about all of the highlights in the lessons, we talked about a couple of even better ifs, and I just think it's really important to make sure that I highlight their commitment to not only making sure that we have the most robust science curriculum that is out there, but these guys are every single day just fine-tuning what they do, teaching English language learners, teaching. So when I was in those classes, there were a lot of students who participate in the project achievement classrooms at Broad Street, and I'll tell you right now, I would have no idea which students participate in PA, because every single student had an opportunity to be part of the science lessons, and it was really, really, and truly amazing. So I just want to make sure that I highlighted that. Any questions?
Sure, Ms. Prin?
I just, Ms., I'm just because I'm a total science nerd, is there any way I could get, have access to just what the scope and sequence is for each grade level? Because I'm just curious to know how the learning from each grade and the science goes, because I know I do force in motion in third grade too, and be, I'm just curious.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I just would like, like to learn about it more, because I find it fascinating, and that looks awesome.
Ms. Gilio?
That, that's something that I think I would also like to see with regard to any of the curriculum items, but also, it's just so exciting to see them, so little and being so excited about science. It's just a different world from back in the days, in the 50s, so, thank you.
I just had one question. The, are our students take the science NAEP?
So our students take the New Hampshire test in grids five, eight, and 11, and we do have some schools that were selected to participate in NAEP. I know, I believe, I believe May Dunstable was one of them, yeah, I'm not sure exactly which, yeah. It's, it's really, the NAEP is just, it's, it's kind of luck of the draw, you're kind of invited to participate. Anything else? Thank you guys so, so much, thank you, you're amazing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I just will say one other thing, so we did shift their positions a little bit this year, the, the coach positions, oh, it's okay. So, so last...
So, so last year or prior to last year, Monica only worked with K five. She actually came from the middle school level and was just working with K five. And then last year, she asked if we could maybe think a little bit differently where she could kind of take because of the fact, just like we were talking about, the fact that the content builds on top of knowledge, right? So knowledge builds on top of knowledge, and because we wanna make sure that we are paying attention to that sort of vertical alignment. So we shifted the model from just elementary and middle school to making sure that we have a K eight approach, and so far I think it's, it's pretty amazing. But next up, we have an update from Janeele Archer from 21st Century. She is our 21st Century Director. She's the person who oversees Power Scholars and then also the person who oversees the Title IV B grant. So before we start, I just wanted to let you all know and let everybody know that the, the application process has now been opened for the two-school grants for subsequent years. And what we're looking for is, we're looking to just notify, it's part of, it's a formality and part of our obligation, to know everybody that, to notify everybody that it is our intention to apply for the NIDA M. Lowey 21st Century Community Learning Centers Program Title IV B grant. So essentially, this grant is specifically targeted for Birch Hill Elementary School and Sunset Heights Elementary School. And Janeele and I have been working on this together. She's an incredible new asset in our school district. This is also her first time kind of tackling such a massive grant, and it's something that I do all the time. So we've been working on it together, and again, this is in fulfillment of some of our obligations when it comes to the grant. So just letting everybody know that we are intending to apply for the grant. And we have sent out to all staff members and every community partner that we could think of, our non-public schools, to all of our parents at these schools, sent out surveys to solicit feedback to help us improve the program. So with that, Janeele, I have a video update. So just kinda like what Monica said, this is a tough time for folks, especially people who have kids at home, right? So I like the idea of at least having another opportunity for people to be able to share information and not necessarily have to be here. So this is a video with an update from Janeele.
Hi, my name is Janeele Archer, and I'm the 21st Century Program Coordinator for the Nashua School District. I oversee the after-school program that we offer in seven Title I elementary schools for grades kindergarten and fifth grade. I wanted to put together a quick presentation on our program, our operations, and some of the projects that we're currently working on, just to give you some insight on the day-to-days for some of our kids. So I put together a very quick presentation to share with you, and I look forward to connecting and growing the program even more. So our 21st Century program, as I mentioned, is in seven elementary schools within the Nashua School District, all of which are Title I schools for kindergarten to fifth grade. We work in partnership with Nashua School District teachers to provide our students with academic support, specifically focusing on reading, literature, and math, as well as offering them extracurricular activities during their out-of-school hours. So our program schedule, we are run on school days, Monday through Friday, for three hours directly after, or immediately after school. Our program starts off with a quick community time where we connect with our students, learn about their day, and help them transition into the active school time. We do provide them a healthy snack, as well as, in the near future, we will start offering Choose Love Curriculum to help provide our students with social emotional wellness and support that they need as they transition throughout their school day, and so that they can have support within their everyday life. Immediately after our community time, we do offer our students Homework Club, where we have New Hampshire certified teachers from the Nashua School District who are stationed at every school to provide grade-level support for homework. And we'll get into that a little bit more in the next slide. And after we have Homework Club, we get into our enrichment activities where our 21st Century staff provide skills or different educational and fun recreation activities, as well as partnering with Nashua community partners to provide specific skilled activities. And then as we near the end of our day, we do allow our students recreation time to get their energy out until they are picked up by their parent or guardian. 21st Century is not offered on non-school days, so that might be one-off holidays, early releases were not offered, or on snow days. For our academic enrichment, we do follow a 202020 guideline for Homework Club. That means that the first 20 minutes is for homework, providing those students one-on-one support or in small groups so that they can understand the concept that they're learning during the school day. We also partner with the United Way, who provides us tutors as well for specific one-on-one support within those group settings. Following 20 minutes of the homework help, then we get into 20 minutes of reading, or it's individual reading or buddy reading, and then we get into 20 minutes of an educational game. Our site coordinators for each of the schools work hand-in-hand with Nashua School District teachers by way of reaching out to them directly with their student roster to ask if there's any specific areas where our students could benefit for help so that we can target that during Homework Club. All of our students, they get homework with a 21st Century stamp that just kinda gives the teacher an idea of the homework was completed at 21st Century, did they receive a lot of help, a little help, or were they able to work independently on that homework assignment? Just to kinda gauge how our students are holding on to educational concepts during that out-of-school time. One thing that we do focus on during 21st Century is making sure that we are following GEPR measures, and that's Government Performance and Results Act, which highlights five different areas in all 21st Century programs throughout the state that we focus on to make sure that our program is having a positive impact for our students. I do wanna note that with the Nashua School District, because our 21st Century program is specific to elementary school students, we do not follow the guideline for GPA, because as you will know, that's specific for students who are grades seven and up. But we do focus on academic achievement, school day attendance, behavior, and student engagement. We do pull some of this data from the New Hampshire Department of Education reporting through state testing or direct reporting from teachers. We also provide our teachers surveys where they can give us input on the student engagement. We do monitor the GEPR measures annually, and we put together a plan for improvement so that we can make sure that we're working hand-in-hand with the Nashua School District to improve the four remaining areas that we do work on. And again, that's academic achievement, school day attendance, behavior, student engagement. And we also, depending on site, depending on the individual student need, we fluctuate some of the tasks or the tactics that we use to meet these requirements. We do have, as I mentioned earlier, some amazing community partners that each, in their own way, provide a high level of engagement and quality programming for our 21st Century program, from United Way offering tutors and Choose Love resources and community resources. Boys and Girls Club providing after-school care for any day that 21st Century is not in session, our students still have a safe place to go. Choose Love Curriculum, Girls Scouts, Upeat, New Hampshire and National Community Music School, providing our students with musical education. The Arlington Street Community Center providing us a number of different family engagement opportunities, as well as trainings for both staff and our families in the YMCA. The YMCA provides us a great summer program called Power Scholars Academy. We've had this program now a number of years, and we're gearing up and starting to plan for this coming summer. The idea of Power Scholars Academy is to provide our students with a safe place to go, where they are engaged academically as well as recreationally. It's a full-day program that's provided for a five-week period during the summer where students are, the program starts with a pre- and post-assessment to gauge how the students are starting their summer and how they're ending their summer, because the curriculum is designed to help combat summer learning loss. There's a high focus on math and literacy, making sure that our students are being provided all the tools necessary to bring them to grade-level learning. And at the end of the hour, summer, we also provide an assessment to our students to gauge how the program has impacted them during their summer months. The program is offered Monday to Friday for a five-week period again, from 8:30 in the morning until 3:30 in the afternoon, free of cost. We provide breakfast and snack, I'm sorry, breakfast and lunch, transportation to and from the program, the morning hours of the program. Our students are separated into their rising class levels. So if a student is in kindergarten during the school year, they would be in a rising first grade, where they are provided with an academic teacher, as well as a teacher's assistant, and a curriculum that's provided by Bellic Cell, with different themes and educational components to it, with reading, literacy, math, science, STEM. And then in the afternoon hours, we get into enrichment activities that also include swimming during the summer months. I'm looking forward to another great summer. Last summer, we served over 300 students between our elementary program as well as our middle school as well. So I do wanna share my gratitude for the National YMCA, as well as all of our Nashua School District teachers and students who come together to offer a great program. I wanna thank you for listening to my quick presentation. Again, my name is Janeele Archer, and I'm the Program Coordinator for 21st Century within the Nashua School District, and I look forward to sharing with you some of our achievements and areas for growth that we are working towards during each and every school year. Thank you.
Questions, Ms. Gilio?
How are the students chosen for Power Scholars? Is it across the district? Is it Title I schools? How does that work?
Yep, so that's a great question. Right now, Janeele is looking for teacher recommendations, and what we're doing is, based on the teacher recommendations, she's, I mean, essentially keeping a list for each school, and then making sure that, Janeele is making sure that she collaborates with Danielle Booton, Bob Chopra, and also with the special ed coordinators to make sure, because there are some students who, although this would be a great opportunity for them, it also might be an even better opportunity, depending on what their individual needs are, to be able to attend ESY for, you know, additional special education services, but also for some students who are newcomer multilingual learners, it might be a better fit for them to attend a summer activity that's more geared towards what they, what they, what they need right now. So it really is a collaborative effort, but again, the primarily, we're looking for teacher recommendations, and within those recommendations, specifically looking for students who need additional support in the areas of math and literacy, looking for students who are going to be able to attend Power Scholars and, you know, have pretty good attendance, because one of the things that we don't want is to give up a spot and then unfortunately have a child not be able to attend. But last year, we were able to, we were able to kind of go beyond just the Title I schools. One thing I did wanna just correct, though, is I think at the beginning, Janeele said that all the schools that 21st Century serves are Title I schools. So five are, but Birch Hill is not a Title I school. I just wanna be able to point that out. And so we were able to kinda go beyond just the title schools in Birch Hill, but it really is dependent upon funding. So I know right now, Janeele is having conversations with Mr. Donovan, and we're trying to look at our Title IV funds to see if we'd be able to expand these opportunities beyond just those, those specific schools that she's talked about.
I think it's amazing that we have this opportunity for the kids.
And one thing I will just say, too, is that Janeele is really trying to make sure that what they're doing after school in 21st Century really is aligned to what we're doing in the classrooms. So even some of the opportunities that Patty and Monica talked about tonight, Janeele has actually been attending our coaching meetings and some of our meetings with principals so that she's aware of what we're actually doing in the classrooms, so that when we have opportunities for kids to engage in enrichment activities, it's not, they're not just like arbitrarily chosen. It's, you know, fun stuff, like making a pinball machine, right? So, thank you. Okay, so next up, I just wanted to provide a quick update. On January 23rd, we had a full in-service day for our teachers. It was, that day was a teacher choice day, and I did send out a survey at the end of the day, and I kept it open for, I think, a couple of weeks. And altogether, we had 40, excuse me, we had 420 responses to the survey. You can see up there, you know, sorry, I should, can you see it? It's, there we go, there we go. You can see that the, most of the respondents, because it came from me, right? So these are my people. The elementary people, most of them are the ones who responded. But we did have, I think, a pretty good percentage of middle school and high school teachers who responded as well. Obviously, the majority of the respondents were teachers, and then we had some administrators. I was typing this up very quickly today, and then paraprofessionals and others. Wow, it's nothing like having a typo on the screen. We had paraprofessionals and others also joining. So I just wanna share with you what the sessions were that were offered. So the first thing is personalized learning plans, and I can tell you, I was really surprised when I looked at, when I looked at the responses. So we split the sessions up between morning sessions and afternoon sessions. So it was eight to 11, then there was an hour of lunch, and then there were three hours in the afternoon. And so I, I honestly thought, when it comes to personalized learning plans, that the majority of the teachers would just choose personalized learning plans all day long. But in the morning, only 20% of, you know, the 420 respondents chose to, to have a personalized learning plan, and, and everybody else chose professional development that was relevant to them and what, you know, they actually needed. And so I, I thought that was really, I thought that was really interesting, because teachers, I guess, my point is to kinda give our teachers some accolades, because they could do whatever they want, and teachers have a million and two things to do every single day, and the one day, they actually get paid to like focus on grading, or write back to parents, or do anything like that. 80% of the people who responded to the survey didn't do that. They were like, no, I'm gonna actually attend a PD session. So kudos to them. We had suicide prevention training, we had CKLA training, we had math and power training. The science PD was asynchronous PD, and Monica Tino is the person who created those modules, and we actually had a lot of people participate over the summer, and then even more participate throughout this year. A lot of us, we focused on our letters training, so I guess in a way, you could say that's like personalized learning, but I didn't, we didn't count it that way, because the folks who are participating in letters training, it's 60 hours of very intense professional development. I'm happy to report that I personally finished my letters training on that day, and I was really excited. I had people like print out the certificate for me, because it was, it was really great. We also had asynchronous training with Brent Conway, who is a literacy expert that we've been consulting with. Danielle and Bob from the ESL Department offered WEDA modules, which, by the way, anybody who's interested in learning about best practices for Ls, those modules are amazing. Some folks also participated in UFLI training, and then And then Allison Martinez from the middle school had, I guess, like introductory vocabulary training and that was, that was very well received. The art department created some amazing opportunities for the teachers there. The state of New Hampshire gave us a free opportunity to be able to, to be able to benefit from 321 para-training. So we actually offered two sessions from 321. Their presenters flew here and it was actually really well received, which I thought was amazing. Sherri Fulton and I have been working with Waterford. Anybody who has seen the Right to Read movie has heard of Waterford. They're kind of a big deal. And the, the folks from Waterford came here because they have allowed our kids to participate in this literacy program. At the Title I preschool, they've given the Title I preschool devices for the kids to be able to access the program. And so they've been really good about making sure that they come in person and check in and see how the kids are doing, see how the, the teachers are doing with the program. And then also Amanda De Souza, who's one of our guidance counselors here, and, excuse me, she's a social worker now at Elm Street, I believe. She offered a workshop that was really well received back in November and then she offered it again, again this month, Connection Before Compliance. And then Janeele Archer, who you just heard from, offered a session about bridging the gap between after-school programs and all of our, within the district and all of our community partners. And there were definitely other professional development opportunities that were going on that, that folks worked on to be able to work with their teams. But by and large, these are the major sessions that at least I know of that were in my catalog. So we offered these sessions in the morning and then again at night and, or in the afternoon rather. And just essentially, this is just a really sort of broad overview of the feedback that we got from folks. So I feel like by and large, it's a pretty successful day. And, you know, we did get a lot of anecdotal feedback, which you can see there's, so there's like a lot of comments, there's, there's a lot of anecdotal feedback. And we use that feedback to be able to, you know, kind of tailor what our next PD sessions look like. I asked folks what they would like to see, what they would like to see in the future. So here we go. So I asked about a couple of things. Because, you know, when we're using Title II A funds, we want to make sure that we're using the funds for opportunities that teachers actually ask for. And we don't just like arbitrarily suggest them. So you can see that many, many folks wanted us to continue offering PD that is related to trauma and that's something that we're definitely committed to. Allison Roy is one of our amazing partners and she's been working in many of our schools. I will say that, that Anne, Anne Price and Dan Alexander have brought, have brought Allison in to be able to offer some more PD opportunities for, I guess, like more like the special ed sort of realm. And that has been really, really helpful. We also have a lot of folks who want us to continue offering PD related to the science of reading, which is great because obviously it's one of our priorities, right? When it comes to professional development that's related to mathematics and, you know, all the math empowered work that we've been doing, we have, again, a number of folks that are interested in that. And then this one right here is brain science. A lot of people are very interested in how the brain learns, which is great. I won't go through all of these things, but we also had a lot of folks too who were very much interested in continuing to, to work on, how do we establish really strong systems and routines? And obviously, a part of that was we have really strong systems and routines allows us to be a little bit more, I guess, creative and flexible and really allows us to capitalize on student engagement, which is what we want to see. So, you know, we, we got some really great feedback, which I really appreciate and we will definitely take this feedback when we are planning for PD for next year. Any questions?
What's the plan for next Monday?
Well, it's, it's a full school day because we had January instead.
Yeah, so, yeah, sorry. Just because it was a voting day, yeah. Yeah, which is kind of, kind of great, right? Like, yeah.
Ms. Gilio?
I have a few questions. First of all, can we access what you've put up on the screen from home? So can we see the anecdotal comments, et cetera, in the survey results?
Um, so I would be okay with that, but I also want to be careful because these are anonymous surveys. And so I, I really, I mean, I, you know, I sit here and I tell teachers like, you can say what you think and you can trust us. And so I wouldn't be opposed to, I wouldn't be opposed to talking about some of the comments, but I, I don't know that, I don't know that I'd feel comfortable just, do you know what I mean? I, I, I just want to make sure that I, that I continue to build trust with teachers and I don't just give their comments to board members. I'm sorry.
No, absolutely. And I mean, one of my other questions was going to be anonymous so that the teachers can really tell you honestly how valuable it was because in years gone by, we've had lots of PD that just didn't do what the teachers needed it to do or wasn't offered to power professionals, for example.
Yeah, no, 100% and, and 100, 110%, I can tell you that, that these surveys are always, they're always anonymous. So I just right here. So it says that this form is collecting emails, but it's only collecting emails for folks to be able to give, to, to get their responses. I don't actually see who they are. All I see is a timestamp. I just see timestamp, timestamps, timestamp, but I don't know who is actually giving the feedback. So yes.
And then I had a question about what was, what sort of para-PD was offered on the 23rd?
Yeah, no, I'm glad you asked because I really try to make sure that I am mindful of the paraprofessionals. So. All right, so we had seven opportunities for power professionals to be able to engage in PD. So the first two are these two asynchronous ELL modules. We, we looked at, you know, kind of what the objectives were, what the content was and we felt like it was relevant to everybody, paraprofessionals, teachers and administrators. And then additionally, so we had para-specific, we had para-specific PD. And this is the 321 Insight Training. And so the first session was, so it's funny, it was specific for para's, but then we had teachers say like, hey, can we, can we join in too? Right? So you'll see, initially it says audience is para's, but it really at the top, we just opened it up to everybody. So the first one was building and sustaining relationships with students. We offered that two times, once in the morning and once in the afternoon. And then the second one was proactive strategies through a trauma-informed lens. Again, two sessions, one in the morning and one in the afternoon, so they could mix and match. And then, just trying to see if there's anything else. And then the other, the other opportunity that we opened up to folks was Janeele Archer's, Janeele Archer's presentation about bridging the gap between in-school and out-of-school stakeholders. And really, the reason behind that is because a lot of our paraprofessionals also work in our Twenty-First Century programs. So that, that made a lot of sense. But, you know, we don't typically, or at least I don't at the elementary level, because this really is like mostly elementary stuff. I don't, I don't exclude paraprofessionals from any PD unless it is professional development where like folks get deliverables. So like, I'll give you a, for instance, I've had math empowered PD that was specifically designed for paraprofessionals. But then we've had math empowered PD where teachers are making kits and learning how to use the kits and then, and then, you know, implement instruction using the kits. And while it would be valuable for the paraprofessionals to, to listen, it wouldn't be as valuable because they wouldn't be delivering the core instructions. So kind of be a waste of their time. But for the most part, I mean, for the most part, para's are welcome to most PD, right?
That's good to hear. Thank you for answering my questions. And I, I appreciate it and I understand your reason for not wanting to share the survey results. I mean, I want, I mean, I think it's wonderful that people feel like they can say exactly what they, what they feel because how do you know what to offer next time if you don't get feedback as to what was valuable or what wasn't?
Right. I mean, the last thing I want to do is offer PD that people are not getting anything from. That doesn't help us, doesn't help me, and it definitely doesn't help our kids. So, yeah, and, and I will say too, you know, the folks who engaged in the professional learning plans, they, the, the plans are pretty amazing. I mean, people are really, really thoughtful about what they want to do and how they're going to spend their time. And it's just amazing to me, again, that with all the stuff that, that teachers have to do, they were really engaging in professional development. So.
Thank you very much.
Of course.
I just have a question. Question probably. So when there are early release days at the school throughout the year, are they given choices like this as well or is there usually a set plan?
So there has been a set plan because of the, because of the DOJ settlement. So I'm not involved in any of the ELL PD this year. I know that, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, that we have one more day. I think it's one more early release day for ELL that's dedicated to ELL PD. And then beyond that, yes, well, that's very important to me. And one thing I just want to say, so speaking of feedback, so we actually do take the feedback. We had heard a lot from third grade teachers who are teaching CKLA, that specifically third grade, we've heard it like in a couple of grade levels, but that's why we had the CKLA planning sessions over the summer in November and then again in January. But specifically from third grade, it's like, it's really tight. It's really tough to get everything in and I know it's possible because I did it. But it's also, third grade seems to be really robust and a lot more challenging. Even if you, even if you become more familiar with the modules and how they're laid out, there's just a lot going on. So what Michelle Quadros and I did was, we just said, okay, well, let's take the feedback and let's see if we can offer sessions specific to third grade right now because it seems like it's like a big need and we only focus on third grade. And so actually, Michelle talked to Impact Coaching today, who we partner with and they're the folks that I worked with in Lawrence a million years ago. They use, they, they're so deeply entrenched in all things CKLA that to them, this is like old hat. And basically what we did was we, we, we reworked our contract with them so that we could offer specifically sessions to meet with third grade. I think that email maybe went out today or it's going to go out today. But I guess I, the point is to let you know that we actually really do pay attention to the feedback. I will, I just want to share one, a thing really quickly. This isn't add-on, Neil, I'm sorry, but we finished it today. So just really quickly, so I reached out to all of the librarians and I let them know that the Cliff Year of the Book Grant application was open. And I heard from Bicentennial, Ledge and Sunset. And so I've been working with those, those library, or their library media specialists. And also, we definitely have like other folks in the school who are super interested. They have written letters of support. They're really excited. And even committees have been, or like proposals for committees, assuming we actually get the grants, have kind of been, there's like a planning session that's happened. So I can tell you that today I submitted, I submitted Sunset Heights, no, excuse me, I'm sorry, I submitted Bicentennial's application. Last week, I submitted Ledge Street's application. And I'm pretty sure that Stacy and I are all done with, Stacy, you from Sunset Heights, are all done with Sunset, with Sunset Heights and just waiting for the go-ahead from her. But I just wanted to say, it, it really is a lot of work. And so kudos to those three library media specialists. And, and thank you to the principals and assistant principals who wrote letters. And also to the Nashville Public Librarian, or Nashville Public Library Children's Librarian, wrote letters for all three schools. And then, you know, again, like all of the, the teachers within those schools really tried to make sure that they showed what the support looks like at the school. So that's exciting and I'm really hopeful. Ledge Street and Sunset actually do meet the criteria with regard to Title I and free and reduced lunch. Bicentennial is kind of the wild card, but we really tried to make a super compelling argument because a lot has changed at Bicentennial over the last decade. And especially after, especially after COVID, I think the need is really great and that the community is super committed to making sure that they follow through because the grant has a lot of obligations and requirements. And Bicentennial, Ledge and Sunset are 100% on board. Mount Pleasant is currently enjoying the Year of the Book Grant. And then there are a couple of other schools because you can't apply within a seven-year period. So they, they're just not eligible. And, and Crisp is one of those schools. I believe, I believe that they got it last year. Yeah, and they're enjoying it this year. Right, okay.
I just wanted to make a nice comment about Mount Pleasant because, and this for newbies, you wouldn't know this, but part of the grant, it's $25,000 grant, if I'm not mistaken, correct? And part of it is that they are having four times this year, she's having author visits to the school. And she invites us to go and so, so far I've been to two of them. And then they also have like giveaway of books for all these, you know, they have tables and tables of books. And it's, and the kids are so enchanted by hearing from real authors. And so the librarian there, Nicole, has done a really good job promoting that and letting the rest of us know what's going on. It's very positive.
I saw David, I cannot pronounce his last name. He was at Bicentennial and I really wanted to go. If I have no more notice, I would love, love to go to one of those.
Okay, all right, that's good to know. Yeah, so it was Danielle Wells, the library media specialist from Bicentennial. She just had an author visit, which was.
David Berdeski. I cannot pronounce his last name, but I have his book, so I know who he is.
I can see his name, but you, you pronounce it. But the kids loved it and they were so excited and they, they couldn't wait to, like they wanted to start their own writing. They were so excited. And that's what happens. So I was lucky enough, when I was in Newfoundland, to kind of just lead this work. And it was incredible, every time we had an author visit. Or sometimes there are authors who are also musicians, which is amazing. Like Joseph Bruschak was, he had like 10 different instruments. He had the best. And then also authors who are illustrators. So to watch like somebody draw a picture of Abraham Lincoln while reading their own book is pretty remarkable. Yeah, all right. So sorry, sorry that I went off script, Neil, but I just wanted you to, I just. Oh, no, no.
I just thought somehow I was abducted by aliens and came back and I, I watched it, but I'll watch it again.
I'm sorry. No, it's just because I submitted today and right after I submitted, I was like, oh, I think I'm going to add that. Okay, so, and then just really quickly, so I just have a quick update from Laura Dyer. And again, so Danielle Wells from Bicentennial is doing a lot of work with classroom teachers too. Super supportive and making sure that she's another resource for the teachers who are piloting CKLA. So I'd just like to share a little bit about what is happening there. And then we will wrap up. Don't worry, we're almost done.
Hi, my name is Laura Dyer. I'm the Assistant Principal at Bicentennial Elementary School. I was invited to share some of the positive things that I've observed this school year as we're piloting CKLA. Currently, we have 25 classroom teachers in kindergarten through grade five that are implementing the CKLA program. So I just wanted to highlight some of the positive things that we are seeing. Across grade levels, I think that our teachers have definitely said that the vocabulary sticks out as something that has been a highlight of the program. It's really stood out. There's been a high emphasis on vocabulary with all the lessons. CKLA has certainly contributed to expanding our students' word knowledge and usage. And overall, our teachers are reporting that they're finding the vocabulary part of each lesson extremely. lesson extremely valuable. Students have had opportunities to think about the meanings of words and understand examples and non-examples, and using, you know, new words in sentences. When reading supplemental books, these vocabulary words are repeated and students have a deeper understanding of the words. The teacher shared that there's a great deal of vocabulary instruction embedded into so many of the lessons, and we're noticing that our students are becoming more comfortable with higher-level vocabulary much earlier in the school, this school year, as compared to others. This has been also helpful for our English language learners. The vocabulary words in CKLA are repeated in corresponding reading materials. This enforces a deeper understanding of concepts and skills. One of our EL teachers shared with me that she's working with a small group of students, and within that group of students, there is one child who is not yet proficient with reading, but that he's really quickly grasping the vocab in the oral language lessons this year. So she said, that shared that he's using some of these words that he's learned during class time. And during one of her small group lessons, a student told another student that their mom would be displeased with his behavior. So displeased is one of the vocab words. So we're applying it into real-life practice. Another notable positive component of CKLA has been the high level of rigor observed across all grade levels. The lessons have engaging content and activities that stimulate students' critical thinking skills. I've observed many instances where students are engaging in meaningful discussions and sharing ideas and building upon each other's thoughts. One of our fifth-grade teachers shared with me that what she's enjoying most about CKLA units are the rigorous learning opportunities that all students have been given. There are many unique opportunities to interact with text, including acting out scenes and ideas, arguing different sides of an issue, discussing authors' intentions, and making connections with text by comparing it to their own lives. This teacher believes that it's helping to hit a variety of different learning styles and levels in her classroom, so that's also great to hear. Another positive thing about CKLA is that it seamlessly facilitates connections across various grade levels and across various subjects. I've observed many instances of interdisciplinary activities and projects that showcase the integration of CKLA into other areas of curriculum such as science or social studies. Across various grade levels, we're seeing that CKLA aligns with other subjects, and students are connecting what they've learned and then applying it to cross-curricular learning, which creates a more holistic understanding of the concepts that are being taught. CKLA also is promoting student engagement and learning opportunities for all of our students. Our teachers actually really deserve a lot of credit too for really diving into the curriculum and creating some extremely memorable learning experiences for their students this year. So I just wanted to take a moment to highlight some of the amazing things that I've seen across some of our grade levels. In second grade, the students were learning about ancient Asia. The students made paper, which they had been learning was a contribution of ancient China, and they used old newspapers and screens to do that. Here's a picture right here on my slide. And then one of those second-grade students is actually from China, and she can write in Chinese. So she taught her whole class how to write the word friend in Chinese, and that helped to contribute to a class book that they had made on their class paper about ancient China. And then some other fun events that we've had at school, we had our first grade, they had a CKLA unit about the human body, so they had a whole doctor day planned, which was a lot of fun. Our second graders had flapjacks and flannels, and kids sang songs related to their tall-tails unit, and they built railroads using train sets, and that was a lot of fun and excitement for them as well. We had Olympic Games at the end of an ancient Greece unit where Mr. Mahoney dressed up like Zeus. Kindergarten had a nursery rhyme game show to go along with their fables unit. We also did a reenactment of the tortoise and the hare, and fourth grade had a whole medieval manor day that they had. So lots of amazing incorporation of fun activities to celebrate what the students are learning, which has really captured all of the students' interests and made them very enthusiastic about the learning as well. Please feel free to reach out if you have any questions or would like to discuss anything that I've mentioned in further detail. I'd also love to welcome anyone that would like to come in to see a CKLA unit or lesson in action. Please feel free to reach out and get in touch with me, and we can make that happen. And I'm just really excited to see the continued success of CKLA in our school. Thank you very much for your time, and have a good night.
That's my son's school, I would love to go. I, I'm still, I still have a lot of reservations about this program.
Well, so what I would say is this, I, you know, if you, if you do have questions, it's really the best thing to do, honestly, is to just reach out to, because what you, the one thing that I just don't want to happen is, I mean, we can see, we have teachers who are killing themselves, and they, and they are, the kids, they love it. I mean, Sharon, you know.
You know, my son actually came home talking about Don Quixote. We had a whole discussion as to whether or not he was crazy or not.
I mean, they really do, they really do. And so, you know, I, I, I just, what I don't want to hap, what I don't want to happen is to see all of that work be undermined, like, it, it, it just, it, because it feels yucky, right? Like, if I'm, if I am trying this thing, and it's like, if, you know, I'm in my classroom and I don't know that I really want to speak up, but I know that what we're doing, the kids are loving it. And so really, honestly, I would love to be able to showcase. I will say transparently, like, separating the mom board thing is tough, so I would never, we wouldn't want to go into maybe your son's class, right?
He wouldn't want me there.
Well, I mean, I'm somebody who brought both of my kids to my school when I was teaching, and, yeah, they didn't want me there either, but, but I just, I, I think it's important to really, to actually see it in action. We have a teacher over at Broad Street, I won't say her name because she might uninvite me, but essentially, a couple of us, a couple of teachers and admins and coaches, we're going to go over and we're going to, we're going to spend the whole, like, first half of the day there, because she said, you know what, I'm an open book, why don't you just come for all of my, everything related to ELA? Just come. And then, you know, there's like, there's prep in between, there are things in between, UAs, and so then we can just talk about what you're seeing. And I just, I really appreciate teachers' willingness to be able to open up their classrooms because it's, it's really intimidating.
Oh, no, I know it is.
I know that you know, I know. I know that you know, but two things I want to make sure that I get to you. So I want to make sure that you have the scope and sequence from both Amplify and from, and from CKLA, and then, so Amplify Science and then Amplify CKLA. And then, yeah, I mean, if we have any other meetings, I know that I, you know, I sent you the recording.
Yeah, no, I, I was really sick that day.
No, no, it's okay, but I'm just saying, like, we're, I'm an open book too. Just come, just come, because then you hear from the teachers who are actually teaching it. And, you know, it's, that, that is, that's all I ask is, is just listen to the folks who are doing it. And you can hear, I mean, we have a lot of teachers, we, we had around, for like even numbers, around 150 teachers actually sign up, they volunteered to pilot, and then we had a ton more hop on. And so we were, so when I was meeting with the rep to try to figure out, okay, like, if we were going to look at numbers for everybody, what, how many more kids will we need? And we couldn't believe how many more people actually hopped on as they started to see their colleagues delve in. So that is actually pretty exciting too. All right, that's all I got, Neil. Oh.
Well, some people wait to be recognized. Ms. Gilio, no. She'll learn, you'll learn.
Okay. No, I just wanted to say that I spent the better part of Wednesday at Broad Street in the library, and it's been really, and, and my grandson's only in first grade, so when they had to change my library, the busy day to Wednesday, the day he happens to go to the library, he was thrilled. Probably two years from now, he won't want to see me in the building. But anyway, but as they're bringing in their library classes, the teachers have already let the librarian know ahead of time what they're working on, like the space unit that they're doing in first grade now. And, and they come in, and, and so the lessons are, you know, they, they collaborate, and, and it's great. And then, and then you see the kids and they're like, oh, and they, last week, I don't know how many books went out on planets and the moon and everything, just with the first-grade class. It's very exciting.
I love that, I love it. And you're, you said, is he in fifth grade? Yeah, my son's in fifth grade at Bicentennial. So, yeah, they just started Don Quixote, and he has been interested, like I said, we had a whole discussion this weekend as to whether or not, what is Don, Don, because he's like, I think he's crazy, he's attacking windmills. And I said, well, do you think he's really crazy or is he faking? And he's like, oh, no, Mom, he's really crazy. So, so he is, he is definitely engaged, but he's also a high flyer. I get, I get a little concerned about kids who might not be as high, high flyers, so.
Yeah. So I, and I just, and I get, and I really do, I understand that. And the thing is, so I don't come from this environment. I mean, I come from, I don't come from an environment where it is so diverse, even linguistically, culturally, socioeconomically, that we have a lot of diversity here. I mean, I come from a place where there's a lot of, I guess, sameness, if you will. And I only know, honestly, I only know CKLA in a context where there is really high poverty with every kid, where every single student is a multilingual learner, and where most of the kids have had interrupted formal education. And, you know, I can tell you that, that this content was really designed for that population, and because it's really about opportunity, right? So if we have a lot of, if we have a lot of kids that haven't had the opportunity to travel places, or, you know, engage in conversations at the dinner table with rich language, I know that, you know, I was a really young mom and I worked at a gas station, I didn't have a lot of language to, to share with my kids. And so being able to have those opportunities is kind of what helps to close that opportunity gap, because even though the kids might not travel to certain places, they're learning about the words. So that way, when we encounter text, the words aren't just super unfamiliar. It, it really is no different than, you know, if I pulled out this really complex medical journal about a procedure that none of us have ever heard of. And then if we take a black marker and then we blackout every word we don't know, and then I say, okay, now visualize or use context clues and try to like, give me the gist of the story, we, it would be really difficult. But the more kids are learning about the world, the more they're able to encounter the words and then be able to make sense of them once they can put them together. But again, you know, like I said last week, the Mississippi miracle that we're seeing down south, it really and truly isn't a miracle. Whether it's CKLA or something else, it's just about having a, a knowledge-based curricula that, again, systematically and coherently builds knowledge so that kids are getting content in first grade, they're getting it again in third grade, they're getting it again in fifth grade, and then it just, it all connects. So, that's it. Sorry.
I just, if you, if you've seen Ms. Dyer, please thank her for blocking out most, most of Mr. Mahoney's face. Make sure that message gets conveyed.
Mr. Mahoney, I do not share his views, but yes, I will definitely-
That looked like a toga.
And, and you know what, Laura, Laura Dyer has really been key in this work. Amy Blackwell, so many of our, so many of our administrators, they're like in it a million percent. Erin Anderson, Erin was like super reluctant when it comes to all of this, but she's in there, letters training, and she's, she's all about it. So I, I just really, I just, I just appreciate what everybody's doing.
Is that it? All right, I'd be looking for a motion.
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
And we are adjourned at 7:27. Thank you all for watching. Have a good night, and I'm betting school tomorrow.